So this session. In this, this is we're going to talk about coherent and concave components of a vector. As you see, we can write a vector in terms of its coherent components or its concave components. And this is now tell us what kind of basis we are going to use, either coherent or contravariant. Convergent vectors are shrunk by the same factor, the body that is stretched. We are going to see why. The ground vectors are stretched by the same factor by which the coordinate axis are stretched. You can see why the names are the way they are. For what you saw in pictures three or seven, if you are given a basis, E one, E two to here, then you can define an n dimensional vector. The linear combination V equals X one, even plus X two to two. Up to plus X N E N. The X is carry is a password. The E carry is substitute. The. Things we have noted, X one, X two up to X N here, we can carry. Subscript, the superscript are the co-convergent components of a vector V. In this case, the basis E one, E two, E three up to here is coherent. This is what you are used to, except that you are not seeing superstitious or substitution. And I go to see why in session six, why you are able to write X sub one, E sub one up to plus X sub N. It's a N, nobody complained. The components of this vector transform co-contravariantly, why the basis vectors transform co-coervently? The two transforming in the way that one balances out the distortion, pollution created by the other. On the other hand, we also have written this vector in terms of co-variant components and contravariant basis vectors. As you can see. Equation two point two, X. In this case, it's kind of a subscript, why the E is kind of a superscript. So the X, the components in this case are coherent while the. Basis vectors are contra-variant. You see the vectors in the dual space. If you look at this, you see that the basis vectors have superscripts. That's because they are vectors in the dual space of the vector space under consideration. They are indeed the basis vectors for the dual vector space. This is the contravariant basis, E sub one, E sub two, up to E sub N comprising column vectors. Just like the contravariant components of this experiment and velocity. Now, there must be relations between the superscripts and the subscribes. So E sub I, that is super key, is delta. G I. Of course, you know what that G I means. That to be zero if I is not G and one if I is G. Needless to say, if the contravariant components of a vector. Have the dimension of distance, the equivalent components must have the dimension of reciprocal color distance. You expect that I G to have no unit. Remember, if the components transform currently, then the business will transform contravariantly. Such business vectors are called dual business vectors. And note that current business vectors have equivalent contravariant dual business vectors. Just the same way, controversial components of a vector have equivalent coherent components. You can definitely see a pattern as the match. All vectors are either coherent or contravariant, but each coherent vector can also be seen as contravariant and vice versa. And that is because if a vector has components depending on whether the business to which it refers is coherent or contravariant. Does some vectors transform as a coherent, coherent vector? Others transform as a contravariant vector. But it can still make each transform in whichever way we desire, depending on what our goal is. If that's the case, then we should be able to recover the coherent component of the vector from its expansion in terms of the contravariant components. You write a vector in terms of its whatever components, the call, contravariant component, the coherent component and basis as equation two point one. That is, the components they carry superscripts, why the business they carry subscripts. We also saw two point two in which the vast was the case. But whatever the case, the vector remains the same on that, it comes to nothing, the tensor. So the tensor is the study of. Structures that remain the same. When you carry out a transformation, so you can write V as being equal to some, I was wanting to be X sub I, E sub I. Or mission, I equals one to the N, X sub I, E sub I. How do you recover the components, X sub I or X sub I? We take the dot product of V with the current basic vector E sub one, the matrix of equation two point one. Which one is only involving delta and G I. So V dot E sub I is X one, E sub one. Plus X two, E sub two, up to plus X N C sub N. You don't have it, you want. Not that you can't dot it with E sub one. You have written the vector. V in terms of its coherent components and contravariant basis vectors. So if you dot with E sub one, it's only going to give you a delta, yeah, as you saw. Before the division. Two point one. You see, all this will be zero, acceptable, X one, E sub one, that is sub one. And E sub one, that is sub one, is delta one one, which is one, so only X one survives. All the other ones will die. Therefore, we conclude that X dot E one is X one. Of course, X, V dot E one, I mean, V dot E two, maybe X two and so on. Let's suppose the vector is coherent, then you can recover the current components by taking the dot product with the current basis E sub one. V dot E sub one is X sub one, E dot one, plus X sub two, E dot E sub two, up to plus X by N, E sub N. You don't have it, E sub one, you know, you found it, that it is, but you're going to get delta. Yeah, one, yeah, really important. Can then see why only X one will survive here, because X one, E sub one, that is power, be excellent, that I want. That I want is one, yeah, let it go there, X one. What was the condition, even the current component of a vector? You can recover the coherent components via. X sub one equals V dot E sub one, X sub two equals V dot E sub two and so on. However, given this, given that components of a vector, that is, by dealing with a current vector. You recover the current components via X sub one, which is V dot E sub one, X sub two, just giving V dot E sub two and so on. But then we have assumed that you know how to calculate the dual basis vectors. So let us see how we can calculate the dual basis vectors. Let the current basis be E one, E two. If you can write as E one, one, E one, two, E two, one, E two, two, because you have written E one, now as E one, sub one. If, one. Sub two, you arrange them as rules. Then the contravariant, the vectors, the drive is rather, will be E sub one, E sub two, that is, E sub, E sub one, one. E sub one, two. E sub two, one, E sub two, two. Why did you arrange these vectors vertically? Yeah. Because they are now contravariant vectors. Co-variant vectors are row vectors, contravariant vectors are column vectors. We recall that for you to take the inner product of two vectors, you have to write the first one. As a row vector, the second one as a column vector. The one you wrote in the, as a row vector is not in the dual space. But when you get to start session six, you now see where we just turned the vector, we transposed the vector without doing any of that thing. So E sub one, one, E sub two, one, E sub one, two, E sub two, two, E sub one, one, E sub two, one. E sub one, two, E sub two, two, equals one, zero, zero, one. Evidently, you can write E one, E one, two, E two, one, E two, two, been equal to E one, one, E two, one, E one, two, E two, two. The inverse of that. Look at the, the matrix on the left. E sub one, one, E sub one, two, E sub two, one, E sub two, two, looks like what you write ordinarily as. A matrix. Look at the one on the right, E one, one, E two, one, E one, two, E two, two. That is not the normal way you write the elements of a matrix. So be careful how you read the basis, write out each of the current basis vectors as a column. In other words, the matrix is formed out of the business vectors written as column. They did install session one, and the vectors in the dual basis are rows in the inverse of this matrix. I'm going to see what this means. I will take examples, find the dual basis of the usual basis in R two. You all know the usual basis in R two is one, zero, zero, one, hence E sub one, one is one. E sub one, two is zero, E sub two, one is zero, E sub two is one. Have you noticed I see here? The usual basis is an invariant. When I can see E sub one, E sub two. You put that into our expression there, you are trying to find the contravariant basis vectors. That is, E sub one and E sub two. Look at that, E sub one is now a row, E sub two is also a row. E one, one, E one, two. E two, one, E two, two, into one, zero, zero, one, it was one, zero, zero. The one, zero, zero, one on the left. Is our E sub one, one, E sub one, two, E sub two, one, E sub two, two. What you have on the right is, you know, why you want to calculate the matrix we saw in the last, the last expression? To give us the identity matrix, which is one, zero, which is what you have on the right. Of course, if you are getting one, zero, zero, one on the right, that means that E one, one, E one, two, E two, one, two, it's also one, zero, zero, one. Because when you multiply any matrix by the identity matrix, you get the same matrix. It must mean that E sub one, one, E sub one, two, E sub two, one, it's potential. Is one, zero, zero, so E one, one, it's one, E one, two is zero, E two, one is zero, E two, two. It's one. So now arrange these. Components in columns. So we get E one, one. Under it, you have E one, two. Then comma, E two, one, under it, E two, two. Which is one, zero, zero, one, so you have got the same thing again. But actually, if we just have found the inverse of E one, one, E one, two, E two, one, E two, two. Derive at time, one, zero, zero, one inverse, which is the one, zero, zero, one, because the inverse. Relative matrix, the identity matrix itself. The basis vectors are the rows, being the current vectors, you can write them as columns. Not just can, we write them as column vectors, as I said earlier, E one, one, E one, two, E two, one, two, two, just one, zero, zero. Find the problem is for the. This is one, one, one minus one. I said, the usual businesses, I mean, the business usually dealing with. Ah. Ovarient business, so you're going to get E sub, E sub, so E sub one, one is one. E sub one, two is one, E sub two, one is one, E sub two is minus one. To plug them into. What you had before, E sub one, one, E sub one, two, E sub two, one, E sub two, two, it's all you're trying to get. One, one, one minus one equals one, zero, zero, one. You can go through all that, but. First, you know, there's a faster way of going about that, I believe you can do this on your own. That's just matrix multiplication on the left, E one, one times one, plus E one, two times one, equals one. So you find that after solving for E sub one, one, E sub one, two, E sub two, one, absolutely, I'm going to get half, 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 minus half respectively. The drive is therefore is E sub one, E sub two, don't forget, we arrange in columns. So E one, one, E one, two. E two, one, E two, two, to be half into one, one, half into one minus. This is the faster way. Just find the inverse of one, one, one minus one. That to give you half into one, one, one minus. So all you observe, the drive contravariant basis is the same as the basis up to a scalar multiplication. The new basis vectors are happed, it follows that the coherent components of the vector must be doubled. That the vector remains the same in both coordinate systems, we're going to see this later. Let's look at another basis. E sub one, sub one, E sub two, there's two B B and B zero, find the dual basis. What are the components, the current components, the vector minus two, the rest will be business. So we write that expression, I just find inverse of two B B, B zero, right in. If you do that, you're going to arrive at E one, one, zero, is born to one over B, is about two, one, one over B, next part to two, minus two. So this is just a good basis. Therefore, it's bound, it's part which is zero, one over B, one over B, minus two. If I take, you are right, E sub one, that is, it should be one, E sub two, E sub two, this one. You cannot see, we have the full right to write E sub two as a row vector and E sub one as a column vector. This usually take for granted when handling vectors ordinarily. This is that, that applies to gradient vectors. And the basis must be auto. One, one, one minus one is an orthogonal basis, what if you make it auto norma? Then we should normalize the vector, each of vectors has a norm, that's true. The normal basis is therefore, one over two, one, one over two, one minus one. To find the drug, this is. Just carry out what you've done before, I will discover that. E sub one, one, okay, just go ahead and find that. E sub one will be root two, about two, so I want to be root two, about two. E sub two, one will be root two, about two, E sub two, two, maybe four, two, minus root two, about two. The drug is, therefore, E sub one, E sub two, which is root two, over two, one, one, two, about two, one minus one. But it is the same as what you started with. So all the observation, the drive is the same as the basis, this is indeed true for autonomous business. In the Euclidean space, so it is that when we work with autonomous business in Euclidean space, we use only subscribes. Which is what you are familiar with, indeed, you are going to see that E sub one is equal to E sub one, that's what I haven't seen already. Of course, that will also imply that X sub I equals X sub I, E sub I, in other words, the Euclidean space, coherent and contravariant are the same. If you are using. What kind of business, autonomous, you can see why we are so fond of using autonomous business. Likewise, coherent and contravariant business, you need to have them, but then, this is why we just take the transport, transport of one of the column matrices, where we need to get. The inner product of two vectors. We do not bother to calculate the coherent components, which is what you should have done ordinarily. Because in this particular case, they are the same, either or not, we would have needed the expression. X dot Y equals X sub one, E sub one, plus X of two, E sub two, up to plus X N, E sub N. That's. Or just multiplying Y sub one, E sub one down to Y sub N, E sub N. Which should be X sub one, Y sub one, plus X two, X sub two, Y sub two, up to plus X sub N, Y sub N. Which should be the way we write inner products. So with the basis, E sub I, I was on to this, but I, I was on to being the same, X of I equals X five for all I. And the current and the current components of the vector minus two, one, even the current basis, one, one, one minus. Solution, we can write the vector in terms of the contravariant components as V plus X sub one, E sub one, plus X sub two, E sub two. So minus two, one, which is our V, this X one. Our E, E sub one is one, one, and our E sub two is one minus one. Don't forget, that's the usual. This is set of business vectors. Yeah. Co-variants. To solve the equations, you get minus two equals X one, sub one plus X part two. And one equals X one minus X two. If you add and subtract, you need to get X sub one equals minus X part two equals minus three, over two. Those you can write, we, we need to go to X sub one, E sub one, because that's about to ease up to. Because you have not got X sub one, sub two. We're now going to see how we can get X sub one. And X sub two. Which are the coherent components of our vector. So we can write V equals X one, E sub one, plus X up to E sub two. This is in terms of the current components, X sub one, X up to necessity, we call everyone, is this, E sub one and E sub. To ensure the variance, hence to get the current components, X sub one, we see that V dot E sub one. Because X one. So we can write X one as V dot E sub one, we've seen that before. So X sub one, in this case, if we go to, what is V, one, one. Then E sub one minus two, one. You can add that multiple and you get minus one. Similarly, X equals minus three. Therefore, X power, X sub two equals minus half, minus three over two. And X sub one, X sub two is minus one, minus three. So do you notice, the current components are the same as the current components, but by multiplication factor, why? Because the basis vectors are orthogonal. They are not the same, because the basis vectors are not unit vectors, they are only orthogonal. They are not auto norma, let us see what happens if we should make them. Okay, first consider this where they are not orthogonal. So again, we want to find the coherent and parallel components of the vector, minus two, one, you want the basis, one, two, one minus one. Clearly, one, two, and one minus one are not orthogonal. But you know, since they are linearly independent, you can write any vector in two dimensional space in terms of a linear combination of the vectors. Because they form a basis, any two linearly independent vectors in two dimensions, you form a basis for V two. As you have seen before, it's minus two, one, is X sub one, one, two, plus X part two, one minus one. To solve the results in equations, I'm going to get. X one, sub one, been equal to minus one, three, X sub two. Minus five. You want to obtain the. Current components, again, X sub one equals one, two, minus two, which is zero. And X of this one, minus one, minus two, which is minus three. If you solve this, you get X sub one equals minus five over three. And X. Super. Two. X power is that. Okay, X plus, well, two is minus five over three. You want the coherent components, X sub one is one, two, minus two, which is zero. X of two is minus, one minus one, minus two, which is minus three. To the coherent components, contravariant components are minus one, third minus over three. Where the. Co-variant. Components are zero, minus three. You can now see that the coherent and correct component are no longer scalar multiple one of the. That's because the basis are. Not orthogonal. Let us now look at some basic ideas of. For decision three. N dimensional space. By the time you come across tensors, you are probably familiar with the N dimensional space. Let the point in the N dimensional space be represented by that set of N real variables. X sub one up to X sub N, if you call N topus. Usually call the components of the point, indeed, all the points corresponding to all values of the coordinates are said to form an N dimensional space. If I imagine, and that's what, measure space being filled by what you can imagine as dots. Which does representing a particular point in that space. For example, the real number line is the Euclidean space, which for the sake of discourse. Which are called piece of one, where the whole of the X Y plane forms the Euclidean two dimensional space, V two. These are called a call in V N, the assembly of points which satisfy the N equations, X I equals X I of N, U. You can see that in U is a parameter. So X I of U are N functions of a parameter. You, then the shot is of this V M of V N is a set of points which satisfy the N equations, X I plus X I of. You want, it's up to you, N. Yeah, M is less than, and that's why it is a sub space. If you have an idea of what subspace means, for instance, two dimensional space, M. Be one, by N is two. Where there are N parameters, you want, you talk to you, and here we assume that the M by N matrix formed by the partial derivatives. The X I, the U J is of rank M. Which is the number of linearly independent rows and columns of. A matrix. It so happens that the number of linearly independent rows is the same as the number of linearly independent columns. An example, V two is a subset of V five, in this case, N equals five and M equals two. You come across matrices composed of such partial derivatives in session one. The X I, the U J, the X one, the U one. The X one, the U two, you can see along the first rule, what is changing is the denominator. Likewise, the second rule, which is the. Likewise, the second rule, which is the X two, the U one, the X two, the U two. That's an example. Even that X power one is X power one of you want you to, which is you want plus you to define as you want plus you to. And X X sub two is half you one. Plus two U two, right, the matrix, the X I, the U J. You see the. Indices I and J run from one to to. That's why we stated at the bottom of that meeting, which index runs from. One to two. Anytime you see. I and J means that each of them runs from one to two or from one to N. As the case may be, whatever N is in the. So the X I, the U J is, we have seen the matrix before, you carry out that differentiation. The X one, the U one is one. The X one, the U two is one. The X two, the U one is half. The X two, the U two is two. That should be clear. Some of your coordinates. Let X power one up to X by N be a coordinate system for the vector space V N. We learned that the coordinate system of the basis V N is not unique, hence we can define another coordinate system X sub one bar. X sub two bar, X sub N bar. Just note that this is we usually write. Basis vectors, superscript. So the first system, the first coordinate system is not bad. The second one is bad. The basis vectors of the new coordinate system related to the basis vectors of the old coordinate system. As X sub I bar. Is if been a function. Phi I of X one, X up to X N, that is a function of the old coordinate. System. So the Phi I are single valued continuums. Continuously differentiable functions of the coordinate, because you know why we say they must be single valued, because you don't want ambiguity. Now definition. You need to go back and forth between the coordinate systems. For this to be possible, we require that the Jacobian of the matrix representing the transformation from the unbad to the bad coordinate system. Be not equal to, so that you can solve equation three point six to obtain. X sub I as a function that is the old coordinate system is a function of the new coordinate. System. So that was fire and this is now sigh. Right? This is because the inverse of the matrix of the transformation is required. The reverse transformation and this will involve. The reciprocal of the. Jacobian matrix. For the original transformation. Note that there's no preferred coordinate system. That you could start from the bad coordinate system and then go in the other direction. That is, go to the unbad coordinate system. The Jacobian is determinant of that matrix. The Jacobian matrix is what is given the the X bar, the X J. Determinant of that matrix is the K比亚. Else what did it look like? In an example. The same equation we gave before. Update the Jacobian matrix of the transformation and find the inverse. Jacobian matrix. You've seen this before, the Jacobian is. A determinant of that particular which is then three over two. The inverse Jacobian matrix is. Two over three, two minus one. Minus half one. Of course, you can see that if the Jacobian had been zero, we would not have been able to write the inverse. Those who have got the singularity. That been undefined. One over zero, anything over zero is not. You can check. The product of the Jacobian matrices must be equal to the appropriate identity matrix. Which in this case is I two. So two, three, all that, so you can put together. And let us take a look at instance submission convention. We are going to adopt. And says repeated in the next, the nose submission, hence. E sub I, B sub I. Will represent submission I equals one to N, A sub I, B sub I. Similarly, the X bar I, the submission I equals one to N. The X. Uh, bar I. The X K, the X K, actually the K equals one to N. Notice that K is the one that is repeated here. So the submission runs over dummy indices. So submission K equals one to N, the X bar I, the X K, the X K. You can also write this assumption G equals one to N. The X bar I, that should be the X G, the X G. Please. Or you can choose M equals one to N, the X N, the X N. That is that the index that is repeated is one that is on the submission. So we can write. This expression, the X bar I has been equal to just the X by I, the X G. The M G, but the X I, the X I. The X M, but the X by I, the X G, the X G. Because the L L in this case is same as the M M and same as the K K because they are just dummy variables in each case. So that the third index is dummy index and associated function remains the same if the repeated index is replaced with another index. Also observe that if some product consists of an upper index and a lower index. However, the same index must not be used more than once in any single term. Therefore. We are going to write submission I equals one to N, A I X I R squared. We write it as A I A J X sub I, X sub J. What about delta K J A J? This will be equal to delta K one A one, or that K two A two, up to plus that K K E K. Going, you go on to plus that K N A N. Of all this, the only one that survives is that K K E K. And that K K is one, so you get A K. The K J is the connect delta, I equals, that is one if. K equals J. And zero U J is not K. Notice that A K is the only one that survives, K is the only index that survives. Once you have summed out G on the left. You also notice that the repeated indexes, the index that runs from one to N, the index that is not repeated does not change. As I said. Let us now look at study section four. Coherent and contrarian vectors. First, to take a look at linear maps. A linear map F taking X to Y between vectors, this is X and Y, already underlined, purity is a function which preserves vector addition. And scale one condition, that is F of X plus one, X F one plus X two is F of X two. Plus F of X two. And ever lambda X is lambda F of X for lambda in K, the field. Is a constant and next one next to that time in the vector space. Equivalently. F of A X one plus B X two is A F of X one plus B F of X two. The linear functional, linear form, form one from a core vector. G taking X to K is a linear map, a linear functional from the vector space X to K. Where K is the underlying field of X. With K also being considered as a vector space. That is G of X one plus X two equals G of X one plus G of X two. And J of lambda X equals lambda G of X for all lambda K. In, I've done really constant, next one next to be in the. Space X. Equivalently, just as we had it before, G of A X one plus B X two is A G of X one plus B G of X two. Instead of all linear functions from X to K, it's a vector space over K. Which you call the dual basis of X. But I've written there, I'm sure you have seen before. Okay, we have to look at it because then, okay, you were correct. As I take the now of scalar product of column vectors, you needed to. Write effect vector as a row vector, and that was how we were able to carry out the multiplication. If it was a column vector components, complex entries. You took both the transpose and the complex. Conjugate. Does you ever to go from the vector space X A with the transformation to the underlying field of R? Or C, you know what I mean by that? By the time you carried out that multiplication. What you got was a skiller. That skiller was either in R or in C. So the inner product of two vectors is a skiller. In the ring of the line. Or on the comparison, that's what I'm going to get, it's going to maybe two or three, or minus five or. Two plus three I, when it is two or minus one, you are in R. When it is two plus three I, you are in C. If you know real numbers or the complex numbers, depending on whether the entries in the matrices in your vector space are real. Or complex. This G took X to K. Even the inner product operation, thus we see the action of the linear function. Which is the row column on vectors is the inner product. Of course, you can remember that in the case of the vector space of matrices, you needed to take the transpose of the matrix. And in the complex, if complex numbers are involved, you also took the complex conjugate. This process is transformation of a vector from the vector space to the corresponding dual vector space. Which in the case of a column vector. Was to be turned into a row vector. Another way of putting this is this, the vector on the left in an inner product operation is a vector in the draw space of co-vectors. A vector in the draw space is a co向 vector or draw vector. The inner product is a product of a co向 vector. And a vector. Notice that. It's a product of a co向 vector. And a vector, co向 vector on the left, co向 vector on the right. Let me be a vector space, then V star is the corresponding draw space. Both have the same dimension and indeed the basis for V is E sub one or E sub N, what is this for V star? Is E sub one, E sub two, sub two up to E sub N. The connect delta that is familiar with is indeed modularly retina is some super I that is some K equals delta. I E J. Of course, we know all about that. Tensor is all about functions that remain invariant when you transform from a coordinate system to. When the vector transform from a coordinate system. To be variance with respect to coordinate transformation, the components must be reset to cancel out the effect of change of business. Thus, we see the vector contra varies or with. With, that is contrary with, it's always contrary to. A change of business. This is because the correlation is in an opposite sense. To the change of basis. Such vectors are said to be contrarian vectors. Examples. Displacement, velocity, acceleration. Contrarian vectors are generally in. Instant notation written with super upper indices at the super space. You would therefore write a vector in terms of its co-contrarian components. X by I as X equals submission one. I equals one to N, X by I E sub I. Contrarian vectors will usually have the units of distance, so we have seen that before. Or units of displacement multiplied or divided by another unit. Examples include velocity and acceleration. A drive vector transforms in the opposite sense, the transmission of a vector in order to remain invariant. As such, it transforms in the same way as the change of business. So it's co-varies. With the change of business. Therefore, drivers are said to be coherent vectors that noted by lower indices. Examples include the gradient. You write a vector in terms of its current components, X of I as X equals submission I equals one to. X of I E sub I. I, we've seen all this before, we're just. Complicating this for that. I think it's becoming clearer now why we have to go through all this. Coherent vectors usually have the use of inverse of distance or the unit of inverse of distance multiplied. Or divided by another unit. Not that the operator grad is equivalent to dividing by a vector. Know what that is, that is. In component, that's D D X, D D Y, D Z. That's if you are dividing by a vector. Contrarian vectors, a set of N functions, A I. A I of X I, I equals one to N, that's just the functional dependence inside the brackets. For the anchorness X sub I are said to be the components of a contrarian vector. If we are changing from the coordinates, X sub I to X sub I bar, they transform according to the equation. E sub I bar equals the X bar I. The X G A J. Notice that um. On the left, you have E sub I, then on top, the X bar I. The G, the dummy index. The answer that any N functions can be chosen as the components of a contrarian vector. In the coordinate system X I. And the equations four point twenty five, the N components, the new coordinate system X bar I. If you apply the X K, the X bar to equation four point one. Get the X bar, that's the D X bar I. A. Bar I. Just bring in four point one, I see this to be the X K, the X bar. The X bar I, the X J, eighty. It should be the X K, the X bar I, the X bar I, the X K, A J. So what do you notice? It's to be G X K, the X J. Look at. The expression in between, the one, the third expression on that. Line. What do you think makes it to be the X K, the X J? That should be obvious. Of course, remember, this is instance submission index, I mean a convention, I'm going to get A K. Because. Submission is carried out on G, so you get A K. So we cannot write A K as been equal to the X K, the X bar A bar I. For example, the differential, the X bar, the X I from the components of a contrarian vector. Whose components in any other system. Are the differentials, the X bar I of that system. To the X bar K, the X bar K, the X bar I, the X I. It follows that the X bar, the X I D U is also a contrarian vector, which is called the tangent vector to the core. Is the core X. Is the code X sub I equals X bar I of U. Why, the X bar I, the U, is the X bar I, the X J, the X D U. It's chain rule. And T bar I equals the X bar I, the X J, T J. So T bar I is the X bar I, the U. That define the tangent vector man. You can see, I was related to the old. Tangent vector. With the exception of the coordinates, X sub I themselves is single upper index and denote a contravariant vector. Unless otherwise stated. Overran vectors, a set of N functions is. That should be A sub I, not A sub I, but I'm pissed. A sub I, that should be A sub I of X I. Because I, where I equals one to N of the N coordinates X. Super I are said to be the components of a coherent vector. If we are changing from the coordinates. X bar, X I to X bar I. They transform according to the equation, A sub I bar equals the X J, the X bar I. A J. Notice that the dummy in the, this is really the dummy indexes in this case. And. While we are transforming contravariant, the new. When this is the bar, the X bar was on top. Now, the X J is on top, why the X bar is below. It says that any N functions can be chosen as the components of a coherent vector in the coordinate system X I. And the equation, that should be four point two. You find the N components in the new coordinate system, X bar I. We do as we did earlier. For contravariant. Vectors. The X bar I, the X C, the X K, A, so I bar, it was the X bar I, the X K. We bring in the expression four point two, the X J, the X bar I, A J. It should be put to the X J, the X K, A J, which would be A K. Yet again, we summed up the dependence on, yeah. Since D F, the X bar I is D F, the X J, the X K, the X bar I, by a chain rule. Those are the X, the F J X I are the components of a coherent vector. Whose components in any other system are the corresponding partial derivatives, D F, the X bar I. Such a coherent vector is called the gradient of. Don't forget that it's just a function in this case. A single variable subscript will always denote a coherent vector unless otherwise stated. The variance, any function I of the end coordinates X sub I is called. An invariant or a scalar with respect to the coordinate transformation, if. I equals I bar, where I by the value of I in the new coordinate system, X bar I, in other words. When you transform from one coordinate system to another. And if you're actually means. When it changed. Define inner product of two vectors A and B by A sub I, B sub I. True that this expression is invariant with respect to coordinate transformation. The scalar remains invariant when you transform from one coordinate system to. Let us see how this is solved. Before the sum A sub I, B sub I, don't forget that. He's what you refer to as an A one, B one, plus N two, B two, plus N three, B three. Because you are using instance and submission convention, so A sub I bar. B sub I. And that is A sub I, B sub I, sub I. In the bad coordinate system. Just bringing the transformation formulas, we are going to arrive at delta K J. A J, B K. What's that, K J, the X bar I, consider it by I. And if the X K on top, the X J below, that will give you delta K J. This will be zero unless. J is equal to K or K is equal to J. For which you get A K, B K, or A J, B J. Thus. A bar I. Super, B bar sub. I is an invariant, since it is the same. As in a product of the two vectors in the unbad system. Because of the, I freely demonstrated this for a transformation from a basis to its draw. Not that it would have mattered if it was the draw we transformed to. Any allowable transformation would still have ensured the ignorance of the inner product. So we do expect the work done by a certain force, the way given displacement to be invariant as it transforms from one coordinate system to another, let me explain to you since. Work done is the dot product of the force and displacement, it is movement transform for the current variant vector. The force most transform as a covariant vector. This ensures that the work done is not dependent on the coordinate system, that would have been. So, um. Acceptable. So that the force in the expression for the work done by a force over displacement, the X sub I transforms as a covariant vector. You can write the work done by the force over displacement, what I'm saying here is that for work done to be invariant. Since displacement is contra. Force must be cool. You can write the work done by the force over displacement, do you want the U top to the U N in the N directional coordinate system, R equals U one to up to U N as. W equals F sub I, the X sub I. Another coordinate system, U one, U two, up to U N, W will be called to F sub I bar. The X U. Super I bar. Since the. Coordinates transform contraverrantly, the U I will be called to the U I, the U J, the U J. Therefore, W equals F sub I, the U sub I. Which is F I, the U sub I, the U bar super J. The U bar super J. Which is equal to F I, the U I, the U bar J, and the U bar J. And this is invariant, it must be equal to. Do not use the same index I as it is a dummy index. So. W equals F bar J, the U bar J. Compare equations one and two. You find that F J equals F sub I, the U sub I, the U sub J. Which is contravariant transformation. Zeroth, first, and second rank tensors. Skilers. And vectors are zeroth and first rank tensors respectively. You may express the position vector of any point in space, R. U one, U two, up to U three, where for instance, U one, U two, U three are the covariant properties. Then there exists two sets of basis vectors. E sub I, which is D, the U I, R. That is D T, D R, the U I. And E sub I, which is grad of U I, we have seen later that it says. That this is why the relation E sub J that is sub I equals delta. Yeah. Thus, into such reciprocal basis, you can. Write directly in the form A equals A sub I, E sub I. Or A sub I, E sub I, we have seen all that before, where A sub I and A sub I are respectively. The contravariant, the current and contravariant components of the vector A. Like manner, E sub I and this bar are the coherent and contravariant basis vectors respectively, follows that the inner product of A. And. E K is A K, well out of A and E sub K is E sub K, we have seen all that, yeah, we've seen that definition. So what is A E K? That is, A sub I, E sub I. Take the natural that with E super K. That's the only thing you can get. Scalar from. So I'm going to get this. Super I, E I, E K. Which is A sub I, delta K I, which is A K. The square quantity is A sub I J, which is B I C J, where B sub I and C sub J are the components of two contravariant vectors. From the components of the second rank, like contravariant tensor, A sub I J. Which transform as A sub I J bar because the X bar I, the X J. The X bar J, the X L, A K L. This vector is known as the product of the components of two contravariant vectors. Any set of N squared. Functions can be chosen as components. Of a contravariant tensor of the second rank, and then equation four point six defines the components in any other coordinate system, X bar I. I want to see some example, let's see that. Similarly, if you have, if you have N squared function, A sub I J, whose transformation law is. A sub I J bar equals the X K, the X bar I, the X L, the X bar J, A K L. Then A I J. Are the components of a coherent tensor on the second rank. Because I have a mixed tensor in second rank transforming as. A bar. I, super I, sub J, equals the X bar I, the X K. The X L, the X bar J, A K L. Of course, you can see the dummy. But you can see here, okay, that's just the definition. A I J are the components of a second rank tensor, contravariant in index I. And current in index J. It transforms as a contravariant vector respecting index I, and as a current vector respecting index J. Let A K L be the Kunkka delta, delta K from equation four point eight. That should be delta. Okay, take a look at that, A I J bar equals the X bar I, the X K. The X L, the X J bar. Delta K M, which is delta X bar I. The X K. The X K, the X bar. Is because. Delta K L makes K to be equal to N, it is said K equal to N, that L equal to K, we have clearly said L equal to K. I'm going to get the X bar I, the X K, the X K, the X bar J. Which is just the X bar I, the X bar J, which is delta I J in the bad. Coordinate system. This means that the Kunkka delta is a mixed tensor of the second rank. Whose component in any other system is again the Kunkka. Delta. But it would be otherwise now, if we choose N squared quantities data, so I J are the components of the current. Tensor in the coordinate system X bar I. The components in the new system X bar I are given by delta I J bar. See, coherent, coherent. And then see that it transforms component data. I J, the sub I J, do not from the Kunkka delta. I have a tensor. The set of N. This is about S plus P functions. A, T one, T two, T N. Spark, so Q one, Q two, Q P. Of the end coordinates X sub I are said to be the components of a mixed tensor of the S plus P rank. Contravariant of the S, S rank. And coherent of the P rank, if they transform according to the equation below. When you change coordinates from X bar, X I to X bar I. Notice that if all the components of a tensor in one coordinate system are zero at a point. They are all zero at this point in every coordinate system. Moreover, if the components are identical zero in one coordinate system, they also are identical zero in every coordinate system. Your other indices in a tensor is important. So that A super I J is not necessarily equal to A super J I. Except for the special case, we, we are A super I J symmetric with respect to the indices. We bet, that's a symmetric respect to two indices in any coordinate system, it also remains symmetric. With respect to these two indices in any other coordinate system. So, let's see. Suppose it is symmetric, and A super I J is equal to A sub, by J I. And A super I J bar, if we call it the X bar I, the X K. The X bar J, the X L, A K L. Which is the X bar J. The X L. The X I, the X. The X bar I, the X K. A, L, K. Which is just A bar, J, I. You know, somewhere it should be. J I. A bar, J I. Why should that be so, you can figure it out from the expression there, what do you notice? Unless N is equal to J. And I is equal to A. So you're going to get A J I, since our favorite indices are J and I. You know, the X bar J, the X L. Is not just a single expression. So that will be non-zero, only if J and L are the same, and I and K are the same. So this session five. Multiplication of tensors. This is a vector, this is a scalar, a first rank tensor is a vector, thus given a vector A in the vector space V. And alpha being in the underlying field. You can form three kinds of products. One, multiplied by a scalar, so alpha A, two. You can take the dot product which is A transpose B. And you can just oppose A and B, which is A B transpose, which is that, this is on similar. Five point two, which is A transpose B. A B transpose is very finite, the tensor product of A and B, so A tensor product of B. One is a vector, two is a scalar, and three is a second rank tensor. The product of two tensors, one of contravariant rank S and coordinate P, the other of contravariant and T. And coordinate rank Q is a mixed tensor of contravariant rank S plus T. And coherent rank P plus Q. This tensor is called the outer or tensor product of the two tensors, for example. A, I J L, K M N T. Because B I J, K, C L, M N T. Let U I and V I be the components of two vectors, U and V. And set of quantities, A sub I, super J. Which is U sub I, V sub K, sub J. Are the components of the outer product of U and V. A J I is a second rank tensor obtained from the components, U sub I. And this object, super J, best rank tensors. That is vectors, U and V, indeed, A I J can be represented by. An N by N matrix, which for instance, in the case of N equals three. Refer to the basis, E, super I tensor product, E. Sub J, can be written as. U tensor product of V equals U sub one, V sub one. U sub one, V sub two, as in that expression, that matrix. Now take a look at what I am writing here. The basis is sub, super I. Is sub, that's what I mean, is sub J. Because I have written this tensor as A equals A super J sub I. E super I, tensor product, E sub J. You can write the matrices for A super I J and A. You can write the matrices for A super I J and A sub. I J. The other product of two vectors is often denoted without reference to any coordinate system as A equals U tensor product of B. Does depend on whether the specific basis are contravariant, covariant, or mixed. We could write A as. A equals A super I J, E sub I, tensor product of E sub J. Because A super I sub J, E sub I, tensor product of E super J. A sub I, super J, E tensor product of E I, tensor product of E sub. Yeah. Or A sub I J, E tensor product of E I, tensor product of E super J, the last one should be E sub, super I. Tensor product of E super J. Look at the trend, A super I J. Then the basis E I tensor product of E. This sub I, tensor product of E sub J. We are A super I J, A super I sub J, A super. J sub I. And this sub I J are the contravariant mixed, that is, first one mixed contra, uh, covariant contra. Second one, mixed contra covariant. And covariant components of vector A respectively. The four sets of quantities form the components of same tensor. But to refer to different basis. Though that in some resources, the outer product of two first rank tensors. It is vectors, U and V, it's written as A equals U V. Such a tensor written as U V or U tensor product of B is also, is also called a dyadic. A triad can be written A tensor product of B tensor product of C. It should be obvious that. What the possible ways of writing the triad could be, it is. A super I J K. E sub I, tensor product of E sub J, tensor product of E sub K. And similar. Combinations. Let us now look at the properties of the tensor product. A tensor B. Transpose is B tensor product of A. A tensor product of B C is A into B dot C. Of course, that means you now have a vector in the direction of A. Trace of A tensor product of B is A dot B. And A cross, it has a lot of B dot C, it has a lot of D. It was A dot C. Multiplied by B dot D. Of course, there's no ambiguity in that expression. A tensor product of B dot C to D. A tensor product of B C. Tensor product of D is B dot C. A. Sensor product. D. Or prove the following identity for U V in the vector space V. A into U, tensor product of V equals A U, tensor product of V. Let it side act on an arbitrary vector A in V, the left hand side will give you. A into tensor product of U, A U tensor product of V, A equals A. Into U, tensor product of V acting on A. If you do that, you get A into V dot A U. Because C of five point nine. And since. V dot A is now just a number. Since an inner product is a scalar. Bring it out, and you get V dot A, A U. On the right hand side, A U, tensor product of V A, is V dot A. A U. But you can see where that comes from. That is. Depression two again. Hence, the identity holds true since the right hand side is equal to the left hand. Side. Rules for invariant expression. Invariant tensor expressions are pressures that remain invariant as we transform from one coordinate system to another. For instance. Formular for inner product remain invariant illustrated on the coordinate system, so A sub I, B sub I. Equals A super I bar. B sub I bar, that should be a bar on top of that there on the right hand. For two arbitrary vectors, A and B. Especially for the vector A, which read as A super I, E sub I. Because A super I bar, E sub I bar, in both the unbad and the bad coordinate system, from. The bad. The unbad to the bad system. A super I, B super I is not invariant. As you can see, for that expression, A super I bar. A super I bar. Bringing the. Contravariant formulas, transmission formulas, I'm going to arrive at the X bar I. The X K, the X bar I, the X M. E K E M, which cannot be reduced to A K M. Unless you are working with Cartesian coordinates in which. X I bar equals X I. And consequently, two partial derivatives. Become, partial differential become. The X, I mean, delta I K, delta I. M. Which then transform. A K E M to. A I. A, that should be A I B I. This should have been B M. To A K B M. If this holds. Then you would have got. A I. B I. Invariant form involves a contravariant component and a covariant component. It is necessary therefore to note the proper way of writing the indices to ensure. Invariance of an expression. One. An index that appears only once and a frequency free index, it must appear once and only once in every time. Each pair of dummy index should be complementary, one should be contravariant and the other covariant. In general tensors, these are the only indices that indicate summation. No index must appear more than once in a single term. Three. Each free index. Should retain its position of covariance or contravariant, thus once. An index is contravariant in one time, it will be contravariant in every other. For example, G sub I J, A super I, this part J is the correct expression for the invariant inner product between two contravariant vectors. While G super I J, A sub I, B sub I. That should be A sub I, B sub J. Is the invariant inner product between covariant vectors, A and B. D I J is the metric tensor, and G super I J is its inverse. So G super I J, A sub I, A super I, B super J. And G sub I J, A sub I, B sub I are not invariant. Contraction from equation four point nine. A S T. If you are bar. Just figure out that expression. And. Set T equal to R, set T equal to R, you're going to get. The X bar S. The X I, the X bar R, the X T, the X L, the X bar P. The X M, the X bar Q, the X N, the X bar R. A I J L M N. Something to cancel, since you set T equal to R. You're going to get. The X bar S, the X I. The X bar L. Because the X bar R has canceled out. The X bar L. The X L, the X bar P. The X N, the X bar Q. Delta N J, because you have G N. The X N, the N J, the X N, the X J, rather. Which is delta N J, then A I J. L M N. If you set N equal to J. What you're going to get is the X bar S, the X I, the X L, the X bar P, the X M, the X bar Q. A I N. Because it said J equal to them. A I N, L M N. Thus, you notice that A I J, L M N, L M J. Is a mixed tensor. Contravariant of the first rank and covariant of the second rank, why did you say that? Look at the expressions, they are D X T, there are only three of them left. As you can see. Only one covariant. And two, only one contravariant, this one. And two covariant. So. Contravariant of the first rank and covariant of the second rank. This process called contraction. Allows us to obtain a tensor of rank R minus two from a mixed tensor of rank R. Notice that an invariant can be viewed as a contraction to a zero rank of a mixed second rank tensor. So when you carry out the inner product. Of two vectors. That is contraction. First rank, first rank. That is. Rank two minus two. That gives you rank zero. That is why the inner product of two vectors gives you a scalar. You can also combine multiplication of contraction, contraction to produce new tensors. If you from A I J K. And B. L M N T, you may obtain. A I J K, B L M N. T. This process is called inner multiplication and resulting tensor and inner product of the two tensors. Two indices of the same type are never contracted. As the resulting sum is not necessarily a tensor. So one must be cool. Other one must be contract. Essentially, this is a common way. Of testing whether a varied set of functions from the components, from the components of a tensor. And it states that N P functions of X I form the components of a tensor of rank P. Whose covariant and contravariant character can be determined. Provided that an inner product of these functions with an arbitrary tensor is itself a tensor. A set of N three functions, A I J K, form the components of a tensor of the type indicated by synthesis if. We multiply it by a tensor, and we still get a tensor. This A L J K. B P I J equals C P K. This is A B I A I J K. B. P I J, so I I. This is equal to C P K. I and J have been summed up. Let vector A and tensor B, it's such that A super I equals A B super I K. C K, so that C is also a vector. You transform both sides, A J bar equals the X bar J, the X bar I, the X I, A I. Being contract. Vector. Because the X bar J, the X I, B I K, C K. In the bad frame, A J bar equals. B J K bar, C K bar, but. B J K bar, is that expression there transformed? Hence, A J bar. Because let's put it back, the X. J bar, the X P. The X K bar, the X Q. B P Q, C. K bar. If you create five fifteen and five eighteen, see that A J bar, called the X. Bar J, the X I. A I. Which is the X bar J, the X I, B I K C K. Which is the X bar J, the X P, the X bar K, the X Q. B P Q, C K bar. The Kronika Delta and the Lebesgue symbol, the Kronika Delta symbol is. Delta I one. I two up to I N, G one, G two to G N, equals determinant of. Delta I one, G one, just as you have it there. Let's start symbol. If I J K, currently, if I super I J K. This is a tensor related to the Kronika Delta. And it's such that, if I one, I two up to I N equals delta. I one, I two up to I N, one, two, three up to N. If you put that into the previous expression. So instead of writing G one, G two to G N, you write one up to N. And that is, that expression of F C. For example. Example. If I J K is, if not, delta I J K, one, two, three, which is delta one, that I one. That I two. That I three. That are. G one, that I G two, that I G three. That I K one, that I K two, that I K three, determinant of that. Which is zero if I J K is not a combination of one, two, three. And plus or minus one, if I J K is an even or odd combination of I one, two, three respectively. That you can test. Let us stop here. For the.